Could you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Now, I'd like to call up Pastor David Shorts for his vacation.
It's here that Harry called the Magi secret beach found in front of them the exact star and where it appeared sent them to Bethlehem. After they had heard the cane, they went on their way and the star they had seen in the east went ahead of them and stopped over the place where the child was. When they saw the star, they were overjoyed. And on coming to the house, they saw the child with his mother buried, and they bowed down and worshiped him. Lord, we just thank you for coming as a child and giving your life for all of us. Thank you for the example of these leaders, these Magi, that really humbled themselves, came, bowed, and worshipped you, and with humility, we come to you this evening for your guidance, your help, Lord, that you would give us counsel, that you would give us insight, that you would assist us in all that we do in this place tonight. And we ask you in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston? Trustee Horn?
Here.
Trustee Raisik?
Here.
Trustee Vincent?
Here.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
At this time, we'll have open to the public, agenda items only. If anyone has anything they'd like to comment on, please step forward. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So will I.
Second, any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yeah.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
We'll move on to the clerk's report. Tenisha?
No report, sir.
No report. On the mayor's report, I'd like to call Scott Buechner forward.
Can you make a quick correction on it?
Yes, sir.
Buggner.
Buggner. I really thought it wasn't Buggner. Thank you, Scott. And Scott and I have met and talked already. You all had his resume, I do believe. You have any questions for Scott? With that in mind, I would say that welcome aboard, Scott. Thank you very much. Roll call, please. A motion to approve, Scott.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray? Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming aboard, Scott. You said, appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to call forward Ed Gross. Ed?
I'm not going to say it's Ross. Hold on, buddy.
Ed has already volunteered for a position here graciously. He goes to meetings that have to do with the IML conference group that look for different businesses to command. In fact, you got your picture in a magazine this month as a member. How about that, appointed? Anyway, most of you should know Scott, I mean Ed, he served as Chair of P&amp;Z for quite a while, and we want to appoint Ed to the Police Commission. If anyone has any questions, this would be a good time to ask Ed.
Ed, you were Chairman of P&amp;Z for how long?
Chairman of P&amp;Z for two years, but I've done the commission for about nine years before that, and then back in the 90s, I was probably building a team of three.
Okay. And how did you end your relationship with the P&amp;Z?
How did I end it?
Yeah.
I left the P&amp;Z a couple summers ago.
Okay. Can you tell me the circumstances around that?
The reason I left the P&amp;Z is that I could not work with a mayor that did what he did.
Well, now you got us off. I guess you're going to have to elaborate a little bit.
No, I don't think you have to. He's pretty honest in his answer.
He doesn't have to elaborate. He's honest. Well, I'm just trying to understand the background. So, my question is, well, I guess what I heard, how you quit that position was...
Could you clarify who you heard from?
I believe it was the last administrator.
Believe or not sure?
It was the last administrator.
Thank you.
So, I heard that, I was told, let's put it that way, let's be very clear, I was told that they pulled up to work on a certain morning, and the zone books and the ordinance books were on the front stoop, and there was a note that said, "I quit."
That's correct.
Can you elaborate on why you did it that way?
Could I interrupt you? I think this is something that would be better taken offline, because this is something that happened in a past administration, and he's been recommended by several members of this current board and the mayor. That would be my recommendation.
I thought I was, I thought it was okay to ask questions.
Any question again, or not?
Could you elaborate on why it was done in that way?
I couldn't figure out another way to do it. I left it, and I said, "I'm done." I will not work with that person anymore.
Okay. For the record, I served as Chair of the P&amp;Z Committee with Ed. He always was extremely professional, extremely knowledgeable, provided good service, and I consider to be the most knowledgeable person at the time on the P&amp;Z. I've always found him to be very professional. I know he works up by O'Hare and has to leave pretty early in the morning, because I've tried to hook up with him a few times and couldn't get him, but I wholeheartedly recommend him and wholeheartedly support him.
Any other discussion? If not, a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Glad to have you aboard, Ed. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Move on to the Administrator's Report.
David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On your agenda, you have item H1, which is a traffic enforcement agreement for the Amazon property, and we're asking for permission, asking permission of the mayor to sign, be authorized to sign this report. It will allow our law enforcement to enter upon private property for the enforcement of all local state traffic laws. Amazon is in agreement with this, and again, our request is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I do have one question. So, as its private land, do they pay for that, or do they, is there any charges involved in standard fees to us?
Not for...
Not for the enforcement of traffic laws. That falls under the normal patrol, but we do need authorization to enter upon the property. Chief is brought to our attention due to the volume of traffic within their property confines. It's well warranted. Yes.
Any other discussion?
We don't expect this to be anything where our officers are domiciled there at all, do we?
What was that? I'm sorry, David, what was that?
We don't expect there to be a situation here where officers would be domiciled there. Would they be staying there during the day? This suggests for if they're going after somebody who goes into the parking lot, they follow them, or how's that going to be worked out?
I think that's better answered by the chief. My understanding is it's under normal patrol procedures, but I'll let the chief speak to that.
Yes. Yes, an answer to your question. It would just be on normal patrol if the guys do drive through there occasionally and observe violation, they will now have the authority to enforce. There is some addition to that, I will let Trustee Raisik explain later, but that would be under a contractual agreement with Amazon if we were to work a regular shift within the property.
Any other discussion?
Do we expect this to raise the cost, is the obvious question of the police department? No, we do not. No, we do not? No.
If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item H2 on the agenda is a payment request from Aries Inc., Incorporated, rather, and that amount of the request is for $167,799.60, and that has to do with the 2017 Manhole Rehabilitation Project. This entire contract was previously approved by this board, and they have been working on that, and this is, this request for payment is merely to keep the board informed as to the progress of the overall project. Our request is that the motion to approve the payment is granted.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Discussion and the motion?
The budget list is coming out, won't it?
It's coming out of... Out of the sanitary sewer portion of the water and sewer department. It is a budgeted expense, sir.
Any other discussion?
If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yeah.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item H3 on the agenda has to do with the, an impact bargaining that went on between the village and the police Teamsters Local 700, in which there was a memorandum of understanding reached between the two parties, which allowed for promotional testing for sergeants to take place from the rank of patrol to the position of sergeant. Previously, the contract limited the promotional exam had to come from the rank of corporal, and the police department does not employ that rank of corporal. So, it was mutually agreed upon, and we would ask permission, the request is to do a permission to allow the mayor to sign this memorandum of understanding between the village of Moni and Teamsters Local 700.
Any discussion?
I have one question. So, going forward, will we be promoting patrolmen to corporal, or will they simply test out of that?
Currently?
Currently, we are in the testing process through the Police Commission, and the board has authorized a third sergeant, which triggered the testing, and the intent is to continue that promotional exam and ultimately promote from a patrol person to sergeant, rank of sergeant.
You bet.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
I'll make that motion. I thought it was a motion.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
It's number, please.
It's just ordinary. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
That concludes my report this evening. We'll move on to officials' reports. For the court, trustee...
I have a few news tonight.
Gray?
Finally. Egypt's Trail is on schedule. If not done by Friday, it will be done before Tuesday. All we are working on now is the roundabouts. They're putting in the lighting system over there. Again, the patience of the Highlands and other residents appreciated. Social media, we love you, but we are right on schedule. It will be done, if not Friday or Saturday, but by Tuesday. And our police force, I appreciate your gentlemen sitting out there. Again, it is 25 miles an hour. You know the signs are not up there. Your gentleman has been out there forcing the job, but it's been a plan for, I believe, three, three and a half years, and it is now almost complete. So, again, Egypt's Trail, the roundabout, the Highlands, the town is building, and hopefully it's steps to a bigger thing. Thank you.
End of report, Ed?
Oh, yes, sir. End of report.
Okay, trustee Gray? We'll move on to Parks and Recs. Trustee Vincent?
Parks and Rec Department would like to have a meeting on Wednesday, January 10th, at 4:00 PM. Anybody who can make that meeting. That's the end of my report. At the Park Building, sorry.
Move on to Finance. Trustee Holston?
No report.
Economic Development? Trustee...
First of all, I want to say what a pleasure it is to work with Kevin Daly, our Director of Economic Development. He works so hard. I'm sure we don't appreciate that, but he does work hard. He takes time to keep certainly me informed of what's going on, and I really appreciate that. It does help a lot, so thank you, Kevin. We, he is working very hard on multiple industrial projects that are making progress. We can't really report on anything right now because we've not signed on the dotted line, but we're very close to certainly one or two of those, so that's very exciting. The Moni Chamber is holding their very first health and wellness business meeting as part of their business initiative. That's going to be on Tuesday, January 9th. It's at Frankie's at 5:00. This is for any business in the health and wellness category. Truly, any business owner or manager can come, but it really is to, to look at their businesses and to talk about issues and concerns that are relevant to their business. The Residential Rental Ordinance Review Committee will be meeting on Monday, the 8th of January. We, obviously, it is a public meeting. We do invite all of the trustees to attend if they're able, just to, so that they can hear and discuss and see what's going on before we actually present it to the board when that's ready. And we are also inviting American Homes, who are probably the largest rental group in the, who rent in the village of Moni. We've already met with them to discuss their thoughts on rental going forward, so we're very excited to invite them to this meeting to see what's going on. I'm sorry.
What time is it?
The meeting is going to be at 6:00. We're doing it at 6:00. We usually meet at 4:00, we're doing it at 6:00 because we, we want to make sure we can accommodate as many people as possible to get to that meeting, so that will be published as well. So, 6:00 on Monday, the 8th. And that's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, trustee Blue. Move on to Building Services. Trustee Horn?
Yes, a couple things here. You've probably seen the Paul Sheets chiropractic building. That's, they have received the temporary certificate of occupancy, so that should be up and running very soon. We have three houses under construction right now in the village, two in Compe Fair and one on Tricia Court, which is a subdivision, a little bit outside of the town off of Anel Lane. So, Paul at the Liquor Depot, he will be starting his project in the new year, in January, I believe. There was an issue with a house in Compe Fair, and it was a rental house, actually, that had a lot of debris, debris in front of it, and was a nuisance, and that house has been cleaned up and taken care of. And then there, the daycare, which is where the old doc's drug is, they have submitted their plans for a remodel, and permit has been issued. Is that right? Mike, is he here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Okay. So, that is all I have. Thank you very much, trustee Moore.
Move on to Public Safety. Trustee Raisik?
I've got a few things from the police department. My mouth is loud. Number one, the Moni Police Department has been asked to supply an officer for parking lot control and security at Amazon beginning January 1st. It would be four-hour shifts during their peak movements. Moni Police Department will control assignments and scheduling to assure there is no effect on regular patrol. Amazon will pay for all extra officers as previously approved by the board. That's what we were discussing earlier. Will County Sheriff's Police is still providing traffic control at Amazon until December 25th. At that time, approximately 500 seasonal employees will be released, and the sheriff's officers will no longer be deployed. Traffic congestion is still expected to be significant. Traffic studies are being conducted to improve flow during peak hours. Lera Way Communication Center is now open for business at the new sheriff's headquarters. Today, Moni Police Department switched over to the Lera Way dispatch at Eastcom as Eastcom will officially shut down tomorrow. The new facility has state-of-the-art dispatching and 9/11 capabilities. The transition is expected to be seamless. And finally, with a lot of pushing on my part, the chief has extended the no-shave rule through December. All funds obtained by the officers for the no-shave season will be donated to the Ronald McDonald House. End of report.
Are we going to call him the Junior Blackhawks? What? Are they in the playoffs? Thank you, Anthony, for your report. We'll move on to the, our mayor's report for May.
Thank you, Mayor. The first two items tonight for the board's review and discussion pertain to the ordinance for the levy for the fiscal year of May 1st, 2017, ending April 30th, 2018. There are two ordinances up for the review of the board. J1 pertains to a corporation, corporate levy, or corporate amount of $508,700,000 with a pension of $489,700. J2 would be, corporate amount would be $601,200, and the pension would be $397,000. We'll need to adopt one of these ordinances for the board's information. At that point in time, whichever is adopted will have to be filed with the county. The last Tuesday of December, we had the public hearing tonight held pursuant to state law, so the first ordinance, if the board wants to proceed with that, would be J1. If you do not want to proceed with that, we need, be no action to be taken. With J2, if the board wants to proceed with that, we need a motion and a second, and then a roll call. So, I guess before we proceed, J1 would be up tonight for the board's consideration. Again, if you don't want to take any action, be no motion, and one of the ordinance would die.
I'm sorry. I kind of lost you halfway through the very first sentence. What's the difference between J1 and J2?
J2, the amount going into corporate purposes would be $601,200,000, and the pension would be $397,000. With J1, the corporate would be $508,700,000, and the pension would be $489,700. So, what we're doing is some of the money would be allocated, J2, some of the money would be allocated towards the corporate fund, and J1, all the money would be going to corporate, I'm sorry, to the pension. Which is, I believe, $180,000?
$185,000.
$185,000.
We have a motion on J1, $185,000 going to the police pension fund.
And we have discussion first. We need a, I need a motion and a second for discussion.
You can have discussion, yes?
Yes, we can have discussion, according to our attorney.
If I could, last month, when we discussed the levy, we discussed using all of the money toward the pension, which is what J1 is, correct, Larry?
Yes, sir.
And since then, there's been considerable discussion between different people regarding how we should do this. It's a very difficult thing for me because I just retired last year, and I live partially on my pension. And I believe you're retired and you're living on your pension. All of us understand the importance of a pension, and our police pension is extremely important, and right now, it's less than 30% funded. So, this was an opportunity to hit it hard, which is very tempting. At the same time, we have a budget we have to live with, and we really don't want to raise taxes to the community, which is what we discussed in the public meetings. So, there has to be some type of, hopefully, compromise that seems to work. I am going to come out, because this is the first year of our new administration, I believe the administration is doing a number of good things, which is going to generate some additional revenue long-term, which should help us to pay more money toward pensions. However, if we designate all of this money toward the pension, then we would end up being short around 70, low, less than $75,000 of what we normally would be passing every year, which I believe is what the second J2 is suggesting that we do. So, even though I made the motion last month for J1, I'm going to not make that motion at this time, because I think probably we need to go ahead and pass something that helps to continue our operating budget so that we don't have to make unnecessary cuts. We've had a lot of good progress this year on parks, board, police department, accessory budgets, a lot of other things. This would still allow us to put around $110,000, I think, in the pension budget, which we didn't plan on, plus what we budgeted through the budgeting process, so it still is a good kick. But we probably need to be able to have some type of additional revenue in the operating budget, because we do have increases for people that are expected, as well as additional costs that we're not going to be able to control at this point.
Okay, since there is no motion or second, we'll move on to the second item, the, on your ordinance, 218, number two. On that one, what we're doing is, Larry, do you want to explain that a little?
Basically, it's the same ordinance as we just discussed, so a portion would be going to corporate and a portion would be going to the police pension fund, as trustee Holston indicated and Mayor Pop. If this one is approved and adopted, at that point in time, it had to be filed with the county by the last Tuesday of this month. And then, again, we had a public hearing, proper notice was published, obviously had public input, so you have the right to take, and you should take action on this ordinance tonight.
I'll make a motion, sir.
I'll second.
Any discussion and the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
1820.
Thank you, Honor. The next ordinance is the ordinance partially abating a tax for 2017 Bond Series 2010. Once again, this ordinance is approved by the board, will be filed with the county. We do this on an annual basis. We need this... We need this ordinance to be filed by, again, the last December of this month.
So, Blue?
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
And that one is eighteen twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance abating the tax levies for the fiscal year 2017. This would be for bond series 2005. Once again, this ordinance will have to be approved, adopted, and filed by the last Tuesday of this month.
Thank you, motion.
Discussion on the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Eighteen twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance adopting a policy prohibiting sexual harassment. If the board recalls, I believe in November of this year, the state had hearings relative to this matter. They themselves adopted an ordinance statute prohibiting sexual harassment. We've been mandated by the state to pass a very similar policy. This has to be approved and adopted, I believe, the last, I'm sorry, the middle of January. Therefore, it's up for review and adoption, I'm sorry, review and consideration at tonight's meeting.
Discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. Can you tell me, my, gee, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, it's not the last name.
Can you tell me if the state has identified any training sessions for village employees?
Yes, ma'am. What I'm ordering is a policy from the IML that they suggested, distributed to the board members, and to Mr. Wallace, obviously, so we can distribute it to staff. But there's going to be some training. The lawyers have to go through a seminar with respect to this type of issue, but I will have the policy, hopefully, not the policy, but the manual by first week of January.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Eighteen twenty-two. Twenty-three, there.
And the last item for the board is authority to authorize Mayor Pop to sign closing documents. This is with respect to lots three and six that we discussed on previous occasions. We have a closing date, I believe, December 28th. Therefore, you need a motion authorizing Mayor Pop to execute the closing documents and checks to be issued.
Motion, please.
So, I got this.
Discussion?
Yes. Did we get any paperwork on this?
I believe we had a contract at the last meeting, and all this does is verify, strike that. It gives the mayor to sign closing documents. If the board recalls, we did have due diligence for, I believe, 40 days. Jeff was extremely helpful in getting the easement documents and pipeline documents. We feel confident that the property is unencumbered, except for those easements, and the closing date again is, I believe, the 28th or 29th of this month.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
We'll move on to old business, ratification of the consensus authorizing the administrative to sign the engineering addendum number one for Egyptian Trail Road Reconstruction Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, that at the last board meeting, there was a consensus that did allow me to sign the addendum for the engineering extension for Egyptian Trail Road Reconstruction, and therefore, we are just validating that consensus that was given that.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Discussion? I'd just like to make a comment about Egyptian Trail, if I may, which is entitled. Without our Department of Public Works Superintendent and our administrator, I don't know if we would have the finished pavement, the asphalt, put on Egyptian Trail. They went to a meeting and made it very clear that the problem was theirs, not ours, that they needed to finish it. We wouldn't have been able to plow, because there'd have been an inch and a half gap. We would have wrecked equipment, broke curbs and what have you, and they were very adamant at the meeting and made it very clear. And lo and behold, not only did we get the asphalt in, but all the driveways, the aprons were done on the driveways, and most of the sidewalk on the west side. I wanted to bring that clear, that this team I have put together does their job, and that's what it's all about. Do we need a roll call now, please?
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
I just felt it necessary to let you know that behind the scenes, a lot of things do go on. Is, is there any old business? Any new business? Open to the public, non-agenda items? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry. Thank you, Administrator Wallace. We need to discuss our next December meeting, which is scheduled for December 27th. We're wondering if we should have the meeting, change the date, just cancel the meeting? It's open for discussion right now. Let's decide what to do.
Is there anything that needs to be signed off before the end of the year?
To my knowledge, I'll say no.
Not from my standpoint.
David? No, I think we'd, I think we'd be okay. That's why we wait until this time. We're as close to the date as we can be. We never know what's going to might come up, but I don't think the end of the world's coming, so we may cancel the 27th meeting. I'm not sure yet.
Mayor, if we did, if we did cancel it, then something did come up that had to be signed. We could just call?
We could always call, yes. If an emergency came, we could call the trustees, see if we can put something together. So I think what I'm looking for might be to cancel the December 27th meeting. And are we talking about a different date, or are we going to go to the first normal January meeting, correct?
Yeah, Mayor, I will not be at the first January meeting, FYI.
Okay, David. Well, you deserve a break too, David, occasionally, that's for sure. We all do. Could I have a motion, please, to?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Cancel the December 27th meeting? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
This is what I mean about, and I have to say it, the team that I have. I did not jot down the meeting, but my administrator covered, Mr. Pop. So thank you all for coming. A motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Open to the public. Always rushing going vote, wasn't I? Anybody have any comments they'd like to make? If not, I do get some chuckles, and I like that. I hope you guys do, too. We all do try to do our due diligence here. It's amazing, especially for the new trustees, when they see what they're into. It's really, we're quite busy right now. If there's, yeah, what, David? Have happy holidays, everybody, okay? Thank you for attending. Motion to adjourn, please. Second. Roll call.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray? Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.